Good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, August 13th, 2024. This is our Cushing at School Committee meeting. Please silence your cell phones. This video, uh, meeting is being video and audio recorded for future cable broadcasts. And as always, we will open our meeting with the Fudge of Allegiance. So there's our flag. Oh, you don't have that flag tonight?
It's being placed within the area.
I was saying, I'm saying anyway.
Yes.
Thank you so much for coming. All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if I could have a motion, please, to open our meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, and we'll take a roll call vote. Mrs. Downing? Yes. Mrs. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mr. Haukra?
Yes.
And Mrs. Quadera?
Yes.
We'll begin with the approval of minutes, payroll and warrants. If I could request a motion, please, to approve the minutes of June 4th, 2024, and all payroll and warrants.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I understand we do not have anyone signed up to speak on public comment tonight, so we'll move right over to point four in our agenda, which is the reorganization of the school committee. So as we know, every time we have public election, which was just recently, we do take the opportunity to reorganize the school committee and change the roles of the school committee. So that entails the chair, vice chair, and so on, and all of our subcommittee, subcommittees. So I'll just get right, dive right in. If I could request a motion, please, to approve, to nominate Mr. Hood for the position of chair of the school committee.
So moved. Second.
Okay, and a discussion. So would I just ask all those of them? Oh, do we need a roll, roll call for that? Roll call vote? Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Mrs. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mr. Haukra?
Yes.
Mrs. Quadera?
Yes.
Well, then, I am going to very happily pass you the torch, Mr. Chairman, and so that you can continue on with the meeting.
Congratulations.
Well, I appreciate the confidence and look forward to continuing to work with you for the benefit of the business district. So with that, I'd like to ask for a motion to nominate Mrs. Downing to vice chair.
So moved. Second.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Sorry. I love an introduction.
I really have to.
Mrs. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mr. Haukra?
Yes.
Mrs. Quadera?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Happy to be with you, just continue to serve.
Okay, so with that, we typically look at our subcommittees, right? And so I propose the following, and we can discuss budgets, subcommittee, Mrs. Gomes and Mr. Haukra. Negotiations, myself and Miss Downing. Policy, Miss Gomes and, and Miss Quadera. The Old Colony Vote Appointment Committee, Miss Gomes, Mr. Haukra, Miss Quadera, SMEC representative, Mrs. Quadera. MASC, Masterly Caucus Delegate, myself, Superintendent Evaluation Committee, myself and Mrs. Downing. Could I entertain a motion for those assignments?
I'll make a motion.
Sir, sir, and a discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Mrs. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Haukra?
Yes.
Mrs. Quadera?
Yes.
That was the quickest, fastest.
You're not, right?
I haven't even started.
Mr. Chair. Now the nominations are closed, so I just, I just want to commend, you know, we seek excellence in public education, but what I've witnessed in the last couple of years is excellence in public service. And I've seen that in the, in the chairmanship of Mrs. Downing. And I've seen, you know, how commendable her vigilance and dedication to her, to her job as this chair has brought a great deal of public support to this community, you know, for the school committee, and, and, and she's been served proudly, and we're all proud of, I am proud of you. So I just want to say.
Thank you.
Paul, it looks like we have no old business, so can we jump into the business?
Sure. All right. The first thing on our agenda tonight is we have representatives here from Why Not a Pair Foundation, and I'm sure many of you are wondering why we have many beautiful backpacks filled with school supplies. And here from the foundation, I'd like to call all the members out, but the president is Brooke Mora, to the podium, if you could just talk to us about your donation. And everybody is welcome. Feel free to come up.
Hi, everyone. My name is Brooke Mora, and I'm the president of the nonprofit organization, Why Not a Pair. First, I would like to thank the school committee and the superintendent for having us at your meeting this afternoon. It is always a pleasure meeting new faces and being able to share our message. So I would first like to give you a brief introduction into our symbol and our meaning and our name of Why Not a Pair. So our organization was founded on the belief that by providing children access to various learning opportunities, different, different activities that they wouldn't otherwise find themselves being in, different learning environments, that we can help empower and make them grow into the successful future leaders of our communities. So with the help of our team, we identify various opportunities where we can either donate our volunteer time or provide funds, mainly in education-based initiatives. These are all geared towards helping children regardless of their differences, learning differences, financial differences, the list goes on. The image of the pair is in contrast to the shiny, perfect round apple that can be seen representing students and education. We chose to use the image of the pair, the imperfect, not-as-thought-of fruit, to represent and celebrate difference. So Why Not a Pair? This is our second year at Why Not a Pair, supporting students and families in need of a cushion at schools. As you can see in front of you, we have a couple backpacks ready for students in need here. Each year, we have purchased and filled the backpacks with each of all the needed school supplies to help our future leaders learn. I would also like to extend a sincere and extra thanks to Superintendent Paula Bailey for her support and all of her partnership in this endeavor both years. I would like to thank you all for your time again, and I hope to see you helping us learn at Why Not a Pair in the future. Thank you.
Thank you again for the second year. Your generosity is greatly appreciated by the district, so on behalf of the committee, thank you.
Absolutely. Our pleasure. Thank you.
And I would just ask, well, before we get to that, I just want to say, we contacted the families who will be receiving, the students who will be receiving these backpacks, and I cannot tell you how thankful and grateful they were to your organization because it's going to help them a lot. And this will be good all year, and I know you went on our website, you went above and beyond, you went on our website to see what specific supplies for each grade level, and we have very specific people that these will go to, and I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for being a great partner with A cushion at Public Schools. Now I would love it if you could all come over, I'm going to take a picture with the school committee. Let's see.
It's not John.
Look at the other one.
Be simple.
You'll push me down if you like.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We really appreciate you. So much. Thanks a lot. So that was our first. Next, we also have guests here from Train. I would ask the representatives from Train, who is conducting an investment grade audit, to give the school committee an update and the public an update about all the things that they've been doing over the summer. So if Morgan and Max could come to the podium, introduce yourselves, and give us that update.
Thank you so much, Superintendent Bailey, and thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, and to the committee, for having us here today. Like Superintendent Bailey said, we're here to update you on what Train has been doing in regards to the investment grade audit that we entered into earlier this year. This audit is a part of a larger project to really upgrade your school buildings in a comprehensive approach. So we're going to start, have a little brief agenda, start with the why of why we entered into this contract together in the first place, a little brief performance contracting 101, kind of the basis behind how the structure of this engagement will work, the ECM scope review, which is really the meat and potatoes of an investment grade audit, the schedule update, so what we've done so far, timeline, and also what we have to go, and then really close with community benefits and any questions you may have. So the why of these projects really starts with deferred maintenance and understanding your facilities. So what are those capital needs that have been growing on for the past couple of years? Because you're only allotted a certain amount of budgets to update your facilities each year, and you're what we call stuck in the spiral of having these things kind of built up. You do the best that you possibly can, but these are large buildings, and they require maintenance and attention. Usually, that's heavily into heating, ventilation, air conditioning systems, and also controls. So that also impacts visibility of systems, understanding what energy usage those systems are putting off, understanding your total carbon footprint, and then lastly on that list, which I know is, is a priority for the district, is also demand for sufficient indoor environmental quality, otherwise known as indoor air quality. A little bit of background again into performance contracting, which is really the structure of an energy management services agreement, is that it's a well-established procurement and contracting method enabled by MGL Chapter 25A11I. It's enabled by the Department of Energy Resources, and it allows for one firm, an energy services company, to come in and assist in design, understanding your buildings, development of a scope of work and project, implementation, so installation of that scope of work, and then servicing and guaranteeing energy savings for the long term. These contracts allow for up to 20 years of an agreement, so it is really a long-term engagement between two parties to make sure that you have buildings that really work for you. These projects can be paid independent of a capital budget, and they can be paid for over time entirely or in part by energy savings, so they don't have to be 100% energy savings funded, although they can be. There's a bit of flexibility when it comes to financing of these types of projects. So to get into the investment grade audit, otherwise known as the IGA, that we've been working on for the past couple of months, our really three priorities when we engaged into this IGA were first, to improve the indoor comfort and humidity at the elementary school. The primary way really for us to do that is to add air conditioning and intelligent controls. So that was the first scope of work that we started to focus on, and that's adding AC into occupied spaces using really intelligent heat pump technology, which also thankfully in this day and age comes with some incentives, some state incentives, which has been really helpful towards the financials, as you can imagine, adding controls to make those systems work together, and then improving the building envelope so that we're not just adding air conditioning and let all of that fresh air, fresh cool air slip out back into the environment, right? The second priority is to investigate onsite solar to realize those energy cost savings and help use that energy savings to hopefully pay for some larger capital upgrades. So we've been investigating two different options. One would be a carport solar canopy option, which we envisioned would sit in the canopy in the parking lot, covering some parking spaces, but also the walkway between those schools. It requires, as you can imagine, a bit more investigation as it relates to understanding what's underground of the parking lot, geotechnical, really a lot more preparatory studies that that need to be investigated. So it's a little bit more extensive, and also just in general, steel structures like that do cost more money. Benefits are there, is it's a separate structure, right? It's providing coverage of the parking lot and of the walkway, and it will also have LED lights as well. The second option under onsite solar would be rooftop solar on the elementary school. To our understanding, it's a relatively new roof that could be prepped pretty appropriately for solar. We have already started to investigate the structural integrity of the roof in addition to what that warranty would look like, just to make sure we're not impacting that at all. So those are the two pathways that we are proceeding forward with as it relates to solar. And then lastly is really traditional energy conservation measures. So in our eyes, that's transformers, it's building envelope, it's a little bit of lighting, kitchen hood controls, walking cooler freezer controls. These are things that we use to really promote energy savings within a project to help pay for some other larger scopes of work. This is just a quick summary of the investment grade audit scopes that we'll be identifying. So I already mentioned controls, building management systems, building envelope, lighting, insulation. We're also investigating some kitchen equipment upgrades as well, and I think I covered all of those. So really investigating every single ECM for both schools. They may differ in how large each scope of work is per school, but we are doing the investigation on them. All right, it looks like my timeline's got a little wonky, but regardless, this is the current schedule. What's boxed in of steps one, two, and three is what we have completed to date. So we started with a request for qualifications issued by A cushion in February. A cushion so kindly selected Train as their energy services company in May of 2024, and we officially entered into that investment grade audit in July of 2024. So we've been working since then and even a little bit before then on starting to develop this scope of improvements that we plan to start presenting to you now and to present to you again in the next couple of weeks with fixed firm pricing and a better understanding of what the energy savings and incentives will look like for each scope of work. Next is obviously bringing that project forward to the people that need to hear the message, potentially bringing it to town meeting. After that, we would execute the agreement with financing secured. This could be as early as November. This is just an estimated timeline, of course. Things can change. And then we could start implementing those upgrades as early as November if we were to move forward pretty quickly. And following implementation and actually installing these energy conservation measures, what would, what would follow afterwards is some sort of either maintenance combined of A cushion and also Train, long-term, for the term of the agreement, and also Train guaranteeing energy savings for the term of the agreement as well, to make sure that your buildings are running appropriately. So just to summarize, the goal of this project, once we have selected a scope of work that fits your needs, are really into three buckets, fiscal, social, and environmental, we want to make sure that you are getting the needed facility upgrades in the most financially appropriate way possible. So getting any incentives that we possibly can, using energy savings to pay for it, guaranteed by Train, and really making this project work over the long term. Second is social, right? Making it an appropriate learning environment where indoor air quality is pristine, and so we're positively impacting both teachers and students. And then lastly is environmental, right? Reducing energy consumption, hopefully helping the utility bills and really bringing their schools as a, as A cushion is a green community. And that's, I think, all we had. Do we have any questions?
So I did see the timeline there, and is it realistic to have some sort of budgetary information for a town meeting that's happening in the fall? Is that something that's really going to happen? It just seems like a really big, big project to have all these numbers done for a town meeting. Are we estimating at town meeting, or are we really going to have some numbers nailed down? Is my question.
It's certainly a lofty goal. I think it depends on which part of the scope of work you intend on moving forward with. So we will have really mostly firm, some budgets to you all within the next week or two. So then, right. So I mean, you'll already be able to start thinking about financing and selecting a scope of work. I know that getting onto the warrant has to happen, obviously, before town meeting.
Right.
So then we have to start thinking about, well, what are we willing to put onto the warrant so that we feel comfortable presenting a project? And that really at the end of the day is up to you all.
So you're comfortable with accurate estimates? And again, I use accurate and then estimate.
Estimates.
I, I do that in the same sense, I realize that.
Right.
For each of the jobs for us to select.
That's the goal.
That's the goal.
If I may add to Morgan's, so we, we understand your constraints, right? We understand that, you know, everything's a trade-off, so we, we got, we're going to present you with options, right? With the ECM so that the town can look at what's the highest priority, but we heard the town loud and clear that humidity control at the high, at the elementary school is a priority, right? So our job is not only to tailor our effort towards a priority, that not all ECMs may be developed to the same accuracy you will, right? Because as Morgan mentioned, some of the ECMs are larger, for example, solar. To, to look at the canopy in a, in a more advanced development, one needs to look at a soil report, one needs to look at the location, underground utility location, and that is simply not feasible to develop the, the fixed firm by the time, for town meeting. So we will do our best to develop a estimate within the accuracy as much as we can, for example, plus minus 30%, plus minus 20% if we can, so that the town can make decision on next steps. On the other hand, we understand that the addressing indoor air quality is of the highest priority, so for that, we are pushing to have it as accurately estimated as possible. To that end, we have been working with different trades, and just to bring folks into a little more considerations for that, this, that will require an upgrade on both electrical infrastructure as well as structural, right? Because that's adding a lot of equipment, not, as well as solar, because they're interactive, so we have to find out spaces and structural to accommodate these pieces. So we are doing, those pieces are moving ahead, so we are comfortable that we will, we will align our efforts to your priorities. That, I also want to point out that that's one opportunity we were brought in to look at the, the indoor air quality piece, but that with adding air conditioning is a great opportunity to also capitalize, to, to capture the environmental piece, right? A cushion at being a green community, so we are proposing a heat pump, which is incremental, incremental cost addition, but to capture the heat, the, the environmental benefits as well as cost benefits down the road, because heat pumps can, he then cool electrically with the same piece of infrastructure, and also to capitalize on existing utility incentives. So when we look at a project, we look at different ECMs and see how they can best, you can capture economies of scale, and you can capture the optimized design as a system, right? So for example, if you, if we are to install a physical piece of equipment and then to retrofit with controls later, that will be more costly. So when we are looking at a project, we are looking at what's, what's the facing of the project that makes sense, or what's the, what's a combination measures that makes sense as a system? So our recommendations, as you have seen, are tailored towards that direction.
And sorry, I realized as Max was talking that we did not introduce ourselves. Morgan Barris, I think I've met most of you before, but I'm the, I'm the account manager for this role, so really the point person as it relates to the development and communicating to you what projects we are considering and presenting forward. And Max Ma is the project developer, so he's the brains behind the mission.
And we've been meeting with both Max and Morgan, myself, the business manager and the facilities director every week. We have a standing meeting every Tuesday morning just to get the updated, ask our questions, so that we're in the loop and, and make sure that we're on the timeline. So it's been going well.
I mean, really, at this point, every single trade has been walked, so part of it is the waiting period of trying to accumulate quotes back and getting, picking the best quote, because we don't, we don't typically get just one, right? We want the best price, two, three, you all, so we get multiple, receiving those, pulling together the fixed firm pricings that we can present that back to you.
I just have one more question, and you might not be able to answer it, which is fine, the solar aspect of it. I know we were having issues with solar in the past with, I don't know what it was, I know there were just issues. Has that been taken into consideration with this project?
Yeah, so we absolutely, we were made aware of kind of the, the previous engagement regarding solar. The model that we've really focused on looking at is A cushion owning your own solar, which is a completely different model than what you had been considering. And while some of the constraints, I'll say, and challenges are still the same, right? It's very, what's the word? Consolidated, there's a lot of heavy interconnection. There's a heavy interconnection, what am I trying to say? Busy?
Right.
A lot of people are trying to install solar right now. A lot of people are trying to interconnect to the grid. It's very busy right now, and that's, I think, where a lot of the challenges were coming from as it related to pricing. A benefit of taking this own your own versus the alternative approach that you were considering is that the new Inflation Reduction Act actually includes additional benefits for the investment tax credit that used to not be available to non-taxable entities. So now there's actually a direct pay path for non-taxable entities like yourself, where you can claim that investment tax credit, which is anywhere from 6% to 50% of the total project cost.
And that all have taken into consideration?
Absolutely. And that would flow directly to you as that non-taxable entity, direct pay into your, your budget.
What is the, Dr. Bailey, the deadline of the new warrant?
I think it's within the next week or two, right? This week? Yeah, so we're aware, and we're working on the articles to get to town. Yeah.
So it sounds like, just, just to confirm, we're, we're working to get that warrant on town meeting.
Yeah.
And we're confident we'll have a strong estimate, plus or minus 20%, right? 2% to the test. What we've done before is.
It should suffice, as I was saying.
Right? Can Patrick head up there and just explain?
Yeah.
Just a little bit more detail for us, because we're, we just want to make sure we have our ducks in a row when we come to town meeting.
We don't want to miss the opportunity.
Right.
Absolutely.
And we also don't want to present anything that's too inflated or too underinfluenced.
Yeah, so thank you, Morgan and Max. So a couple of things. Town article deadline is the 26th. We've been in, I've met with the town, we've been in talks, you know, again, all summer with expectations of this. If we don't have, you know, a fixed firm pricing, I might be saying the same thing here, they're a little more polished with the terms, we will have a not-to-exceed number, which should fit into the scope of the project. Again, project priority is AES indoor air quality first, which is what really they've been busting their butts to get done for this deadline, which we once thought was November, then it was October, and now it's September 30th. So they've been great, we've had people in and out of here every day. You know, this, this is very much an energy conservation project that we're able to capitalize on our capital needs with. So everything they take into consideration is based on energy savings. So we had a light project done before. That's something they would, they audited, but we already grabbed all the incentive there to conserve energy, it's an upgrade. So those things come into play, but this, this HVAC solution isn't just go buy the equipment, put it in and plug it in, it's, you need to have the roofing structural loads. We have a structural engineer, structural engineer out here looking at as built, looking at the move, looking at weight capacities. You know, then we talk about electricity load, and then we have to look at what our panels can afford, what our connections to the street can afford, so you have to have an electrical engineer out, and it's just a revolving door with, you know, their team members and ours, showing them different things, reviewing different things. You know, there might be a million-dollar solution that only comes with a $200,000 incentive to net, you know, an $800,000 project, but there might be a 1.5 million-dollar solution that would cost us a million, and you get away the pros and the cons. So that's been their job of, you know, giving us all of these different options, looking at incentives, grants are popping up every day. We've been working with the town not to apply for green community grants so we can hit the heavy hitters that you're only allowed to apply for once a year for $500,000. So there's a lot of moving parts, but, so I hope that sheds a little more light in layman terms on what we've been doing. We're very much going to hit the articles, we're going to hit our deadline, we're going to need everybody out there to vote to support this project. And one other clarifying piece, which, you know, honestly, I, I think I got confused with a little bit as we kicked this off, is your payback is in energy savings. It's not that you don't have to pay for the project upfront at full cost, but it's the idea that you're paying a million dollars in over 30 years, if you didn't make that change, you're going to be saving a million dollars over this time period. So it nets out the project really not afford you. So it nets out the project really not afford you anything. And that, that's the idea with the conservation and the incentives and the different scopes of the project. So I hope that helps a little bit. Solar, definitely we're not considering for town articles right now. And that was related to interconnectivity and load and if it was a certain size, you had to pay premiums and election. There were so many things going on there. And again, we've passed all our notes on to Train. Train's met with us with their solar team, you know, many times as well. And we're kind of still brainstorming that, that, you know, maybe the canopy is a good solution to provide all those extras. But maybe the fiscal responsible solution is a rooftop solution that, you know, saves us money otherwise and lets us budget, gives us budget flexibility, if you will. So that's, that's a conversation to have later with the focus being on indoor air quality and some of the other low hanging fruit that we can just pick and pop without doing any crazy heavy lifting.
Train has been around for a very long time, is that correct?
We have.
Okay, because one of my concerns with having our little tours around both buildings is that there are no parts of a lot of the mechanics in our buildings are not replaceable anymore. Because the places have gone out of business or something has happened. So I'm looking at this with your company having the longevity that they've had. And we shouldn't bang into that in the next twenty or twenty-five years that we can't find a part. Is that safe to say? That there's something that breaks or anything like that, that you won't be around? I know there's no crystal ball, however, I'm just saying that.
We will absolutely be around for the next twenty years, I can guarantee you that. I think you're always gonna run into issues of parts going obsolete. I think obsolete, I think that's just kind of the nature of the same age. But absolutely, within the next fifteen, twenty years, I don't envision that happening as a part of this agreement. And we certainly are not going anywhere. I'm not going anywhere.
And so there are warranties and part of this, like that's all part of the package and everything like that? I just want to make sure that we're, we'll.
Yeah, depending on the scope of work, there would be different warranties for, for different pieces of equipment. It always comes with a one-year part and workmanship warranty, parts and labor. But aside from that, it's traditionally equipment warranties, which can be anywhere from five to ten years for certain pieces of equipment.
I was told that you also make, is that correct? That you make parts as well?
We do, we make equipment. It's one of our bread and butter. Yep.
Thank you.
That's one of the aspects, if I may add, that makes Train a good partner for this project. Because we are, we make equipment and we make controls, right? We integrate controls into our equipment. So for an HVC focused project, Train is, you know, we are competitive in this type of project.
Yeah, and I think, again, Morgan, if you want to address continuing the relationship, once the project is finished, I mean, there's probably gonna be multiple phases, but, you know, it's not like, you know, once certain thing is done, we don't speak to you anymore. Do you know what I mean? Like, if you want to just address what that looks like.
Yeah, absolutely. I have a number of projects and engagements with districts that I still talk to fifteen years into their agreement. I'm actually talking with one now on doing an additional phase in the fifteenth year of a twenty year agreement. So we truly do not go anywhere. This is a very stable company, not only with our equipment manufacturing, but also our servicing capabilities as well. So our service technicians are in buildings every single day, all across the state of Massachusetts and Rhode Island. And they are not going anywhere. Factory trained technicians and truly my job is to be here for the long term and make sure that this project not only goes well right now, but that we continue to serve you and help you and make sure that your buildings stay tip top. So that's our job.
So thank you all for working so quickly and diligently to try to make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for having us.
Thank you so much. And I just want to reiterate, the process for choosing Train was very thorough and extensive. Because we had other companies that were very good. So we're just very happy with what we've seen so far and I know it will continue. So I appreciate you very much. Next on the agenda, we've been working very hard this summer and I want to give a shout out to our director of curriculum, who I'm actually gonna have come up to the podium, Angela Ruggieri, and also our business manager. Because we are now going to be offering before and after school extended care for our families. So I'm gonna ask Ms. Ruggieri if she could just review with us what we were bringing in a new vendor to make this happen.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the school committee.
And can I just add, how we found out about this is Angie and I were at professional development. And this is often where we do network and make contact with some of these vendors. So this was a direct result of going to professional development.
So yes, Alphabet Education. So we have not had before and after care in the district for years now. It's actually since before the pandemic. And, you know, we have had a feeling that it's been a need in the community. We've had families reaching out and inquiring. And we, we attended a professional development. And there were some districts in Massachusetts there presenting on the amazing experience that they have had with Alphabet. And we started really looking at what, what these programs had to offer and also kind of what the cost would be to families. And it all just seemed like a really great opportunity and something that could really help support our community. And we did follow the RFP process, so we did put this out to bid. And we did have two vendors actually put a, put an op, place a bid. And they were both actually really amazing and it was a very close call. We had a committee come together and to review all of the, everything that both companies had to offer. And I want to just show kind of a quick video about Alphabet and then I can talk a little bit about why it was that we selected this vendor.
Every child looks forward to the end of a long day. But for kids who attend after school, the final bell of the day can represent the start of something new, something different, something exciting. Introducing After School with Alphabet, where creativity, wonder and imagination take center stage. Alphabet is dedicated to providing more than just homework help and safe dependable childcare. Every day, our students get to delight in fun-filled experiential learning designed to tap into their innate curiosity. Our innovative after school curriculum teaches kids how to connect to the world through ever-changing lessons that incorporate STEM, world languages and cultures, fitness and wellness, arts and entertainment, and maker stations. By design, the school day can be rigorous and structured. Which is why Alphabet gives children the freedom to explore through imagination. We take our fun seriously. In fact, the only thing Alphabet is dedicated to more than good times is safety. And nothing gets past our watchful eyes. Before school, after school, during holidays and over summer, Alphabet is here whenever you need us. So come discover the educational power of imagination and help us put a little wonder in the world. Let's work together to bring Alphabet into your children's lives. Alphabet, after school is where adventure begins.
So I talked about this a little bit, but we did put a survey out to families in April of, of April of twenty-four. And we had thirty-one families respond that they would like to take advantage of before school and forty-two families respond that they would like to take advantage of after school, whether it be a day or three or five days a week. And so we had criteria that we used to select the vendor. We definitely wanted a vendor that had success in delivering programs. Not only, not only, this is actually a nationwide company and some of the vendors really, that is kind of their large scale. But they're also local or within the state. And Alphabet is actually kind of growing, quickly growing in the state of Massachusetts. And so we wanted a good service plan, we wanted comprehensive program offerings, strong administration support from the, from the program. We wanted to make sure that our high need students were also gonna have, be supported to participate in these programs. And then, yeah, just a level of experience with whoever would be coming into our buildings, that they, that there was some level of experience there. And that the registration process would be user friendly to families and that it would be affordable for families as well. And cost efficiency for, for our district. And Alphabet really, I think the thing that made us really want to go with Alphabet was while the other vendor did have great program offerings, this just seemed like there was a stronger curriculum piece in place or it was a little bit more highly structured, you know? And so that video kind of a little bit illustrated it. And that video talked mostly, I think, about after school programming, but this would also be before school programming also. And so the areas where they have their enrichment is STEM, world languages and cultures, fitness and wellness, arts and entertainment, there's maker spaces. And they do have homework help. And it is structured and supported homework help time. And at this point, what has been proposed to us would be the sixty dollars for five days of before care, eighty dollars a week for five days of after care. And then the combination of the two would be a hundred and twenty-five dollars a week per child. And I don't have up there, they're working to get us different pricing based on whether a family was to come one day or three days or a student was to come one day or three days or. So I don't have those prices for you tonight. But it really, they did their homework, they did some comps with different providers in the area. And this seems to be either right in line or actually probably under what families might find themselves paying in other locations. And it's not that we're trying to take anything away from that. But what it comes down to is that a lot of families are finding that the other, other opportunities are filled. And so there's just really is a need for this in the community. And so this would be a program that will be offered to K to six students with the idea of escorting middle school students back and forth to the elementary school. So it would be housed at the elementary school, but that they, if fifth and sixth grade students were gonna participate, they could be escorted back and forth. And the, it would be from seven AM to six PM. We talked about, I talked about homework time and there's gonna be secure checking in and checking out. There's a great staff to student ratio of one to thirteen. They, Alphabet is able to and prepared to help families secure vouchers. So if there's families who receive the free or reduced lunch, they could also receive reduced fee for after care. And they can assist families in that process. And we've also been talking about trying to extend that care to school vacation weeks, professional development days and summer break. And this is actually something that we're gonna be asking the school committee to take a vote on. So are there any questions?
Can you tell us what the committee that selected this program was surprised of? Was it parents?
It was myself, our business manager and the two building principals.
Just a quick question on like, for the morning care, is it gonna be run out of like the gym or the library or using classrooms?
They're looking at using the cafeteria at AES and then the gym. I don't know about the gym for the morning time, but the gym. And then they'll, they'll get, they're in the process of getting their certifications for operating out of the building. So they'll get the playgrounds also certified, but I think they'll probably try to just keep it to one. They're gonna try to get a few classrooms certified also. So that if there was ever an event that the gym or the cafeteria needed to be used during the same time, if there was a conflict, that they would have an alternate place to go. So they're, they're like very willing to work with us and understand that it's a school, it's a school. And that there's often multiple needs and uses in the community and that they're willing to be flexible.
What is the max capacity of students that can go in the? I know we, we know what the interest is, but how, how many can they take?
Yeah, they're willing to take as many as are interested, I think. I mean, they're going to try to grow the program. They, you know, it's in their best interest to have as many students participate as possible, so.
And I think it was a minimum of ten, right? To start. And then they were like, whatever, whoever signs up, they'll provide the staff. Yeah, they're handling all.
Two more questions.
Yes.
Guarantee of staff? Like, are they guaranteeing like one staff member to every ten children or how, how does that work?
It's one to thirteen. But they do say that they sometimes, you know, they, they actually, that's like their max. So they do say that oftentimes it will be that ratio, they'll be, it'll be lower.
So they won't say, I'm sorry, we can't have today because we don't have anybody to take the staff?
I would hope not. I don't, I mean, we did talk a little bit about that. They do have regional supporters also who, so they have like backup people in case.
Subs or something?
Mm-hmm. They have subs and they also have like a regional manager. And then somebody who's probably gonna be overseeing a few of the programs on the south coast here. And those people in emergency situations will even come and jump in if they cannot substitute.
And then one final question. Is there price adjustments depending on the schools? Because fifth and sixth graders start school at, at eight o'clock, so they're only there for an hour. But are they paying the same as, let's say, an elementary school child in the morning that's there at seven and doesn't go to school till nine? And then vice versa in the afternoon?
Right, I'm not, I can, I can inquire about that. I'm not certain because I, I think either way they need the staffing. Whether the student comes for an hour or two hours, they need the staffing for the number of students that they're going to have. So my guess is that they, they may not adjust that, but I can ask.
As a, as a parent, I would, I'm just, that would be my first question. So I'm just wondering if other parents will have the same ones. So if we can address that prior, at least you'll know.
Yes, I'm working on getting the exact pricing from them. We have sent a communication to families that this is coming down the pipeline. And I know that they are eagerly awaiting more information and they are calling the elementary school. And unfortunately, at this time, I don't really have much more to share than what I've, what I'm sharing tonight and what I've already communicated to families. Because we are going to contract after this meeting if the vote is approved. And then from there, they are gonna be working on getting their certification. And that is then in the hands of Alphabet in the state. And hopefully that process goes smoothly. We, it is our hope to have a program in place for the start of the school year, but that may not be the case. And so, right, so when we, so I'm, like I said, I'm trying to get a more tiered approach to the pricing for families so that it's not the all in or nothing.
We also sent the principals and Ms. Ruggieri to visit another district close by that has Alphabet. So I think that was helpful to us in making our selection as well.
Maybe we could ask if it's approved, that once we're up and running, at some point, maybe midway through the year, we have a report back to see how it's going, what's working well?
Yeah, and part of our, part of our request and what they do is to have regular surveys to student, to families and students. And so we are requesting that they provide us that data and feedback so that we can review how families feel the program is going. So, and they, and they actually, one of the other things that we really liked about Alphabet was they really claim that they want to be a part of the school community. So they will put on family events and try to, you know, I think grow their program in that way. But that they're doing community outreach and, so once we're contracted, we'll probably see them on site. Like, we may see them on site at open house night or those kinds of things.
You have a question, so we need a, okay. So could I have a motion to approve the contracting for before and after school extended day program? I think we need a.
Subdued, second.
Seeing no discussion?
Seeing no discussion?
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Mrs. Gole?
Yes.
Mr. Hauptrock?
Yes.
Could go.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the next thing is the superintendent's PRP and mid-cycle formative evaluation, which we've already discussed at an open session, but we thought we would just be transparent about it again. So I'm gonna actually turn it back over to you, chairperson, to address this one, this agenda item.
Yeah, so Dr. Bailey, just to be clear, right? So we're setting your goals on a two-year basis, right? And so this is really to check in and see how we're tracking ultimately to those two-year goals. So I will not read this, but certainly the committee provided feedback. And I'll just try to summarize maybe some of the themes here quickly. If I look at some of the goals, like instructional leadership, you know, there's a lot of feedback from the committee in terms of Dr. Bailey's efforts to continuously improve, right? We're always, and she's always. We're always, and she's always leading the district to try to not rest on our laurels and to continuously, you know, improve what we're doing. If I talk, if I look at engagement, a lot of feedback around, you know, the updates, whether we're using social media, the newsletters, all of the vehicles essentially that are at our disposal to communicate with the, with the district and to ensure that folks are engaged. If I look at the culture, again, we hear Dr. Bailey say this all the time, right? Two schools, one district. So I think the committee recognizes that and feels that that's important to the culture that we're trying to, to create here. You know, if we look at, you know, some of the things around fostering a sense of belonging and partnership, a lot of feedback around, you know, the need that we had for social and emotional learning, some of the things we've done, like putting in advisory groups in FMS, some of the student ambassadors at the elementary school. So some of those things, I think, the committee feels pretty, pretty strongly about. So, you know, if we look at the overall rating, it's, it's certainly proficient. And I think our intention here is to have a vote on the performance recognition in your contract. So I can make that motion to this, at this point, yeah? Okay. So based on the superintendent's attainment of specific performance objectives for the contract year, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve Dr. Bailey's performance recognition pay for the 2023-2024 school year in the amount of three thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? So I can come in your roll call? Is the outcast I learned that discussion?
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Mrs. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Halcrad?
Yes.
Mrs. Cudera?
Yes.
Thank you. And again, I always give recognition to the team that I work with each and every day, not just the central office administrators, but the teachers, the custodians, the caf workers, every single person who works in this district. We all, two schools, one district, we're all working with the students in mind. And we strive to do our very best to give them the best education possible. So I'm glad that you recognize that over the years, we just continue to try to make those improvements. So thank you so much. The next thing on the agenda is the school physician contract. You know, every year we just have to have a school physician. So we have Dr. Trevetti's contract there that you should have reviewed in your packet. I'd be more than happy to sign that on behalf of the committee, but I just do need a vote tonight to approve as presented.
Could I request a motion to approve the contract as presented?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Mrs. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Halcrad?
Yes.
Mrs. Cudera?
Yes.
Next, we have our student handbook, which looks a little different this year. I'd actually like to call the principals up to the podium. But one of the things that we thought was important is the transitions for families. We are only two schools, we're a smaller district. It's really sometimes hard for parents to go from one school and these rules to another school and these rules, things are so different. We have a lot of things that are the same. So we decided to work this summer on making one combined handbook with addendums that is very specific for the elementary school as well as an addendum for the middle school. And I'd like, we have Ms. Sylvia here from the middle school and Ms. Passero here from the elementary school to talk about the process that we, this was many months of work. We looked at other handbooks. So it finally has come together. And we have many other projects that we want to work on. But this one, we feel that after this year, we've got it down. But it's just going to get better and better as we go on now that we have the format correct. So I'm going to turn the podium over to you ladies, and you can explain what we have done.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairperson, school committee, how are you tonight?
Good.
Lovely evening. So over at AES, our handbook, the main, the student family handbook did not change. We didn't add anything. We still have all of the information about the shoot, specific behavior expectations, PBIS. And then if you turn your, your items over to the staff handbook, is that okay if I talk about that? Sure. The staff handbook, we did add some stuff, some items. And so now our staff handbook mirrors exactly the FMS staff handbook. You open them up side by side, it looks like this very similar handbook. We added in some like civil rights, for some reason wasn't in there. We have classroom environment and a section on professionalism. So those were some of the big changes. So it mirrors the FMS handbook. We thought that was a great idea that you had added now.
So go back to the, the family and student handbook. I go back to June, and I know there was maybe about ten or twelve of us in the room. We were trying to get this handbook to look great and look perfect. And it was very, sounded chaotic to me, but no, it wasn't. And I did apologize for being so excited for making it look a lot better and making it combined into one. And it is just less repetitive, the format, where it's more organized. And so my addendum in the end is really just six sheets, three double-sided sheets, and everything else is in the combined district handbook.
That's great.
So for example, we have pride awards that are district-wide. Before, the pride award section was in both handbooks. Now it's in the main handbook, not in the addendums, right? So, but they might have had two separate things on the pride awards that looked a little different, okay? So two schools, one district, we want one main handbook. It's going to be easy for families to go from one school and transition to the next a little smoother.
So in the addendum for Ford, you know, my marking calendar is different. We go by four terms, the elementary is trimesters. The cafeteria is set up a little bit different at Ford than at the elementary school. Our drop-off and pickup is a little bit different at both schools. So things like that, that were just unique to one school, which really just ended up being six pages or three double-sided.
It worked out great.
It's not as overwhelming for families to now read another whole handbook that's similar, right? Not only did the leadership do a lot of work on this, but I would like to thank my assistant, Mr. Sonis, who really did a lot of formatting. And there's more to do, but I mean, I really thank everyone who's had a part in this because it's been a big undertaking.
The questions on the student family handbook?
Any questions?
Sarah?
Yes, I'm sorry. Does the Ford middle school drop-off and pickup there? I don't see it.
It's on our website.
I don't see it in the book.
This is the addendum. We'll make sure that it's there. I saw that the AES.
But not Ford. I see, yeah.
Yes, I think that's a part of the formatting that's still left to do. The AES drop-off and pickup was pulled out of the addendum and put into the handbook. So we'll make sure that the Ford one matches.
And I'm sure because this is new, we're going to find little kinks here and there that will correct. But we'd be looking for a vote tonight so that we can, you know, have families sign off on this moving forward. Nothing will be changed. If something is changed, like a drastic change, obviously, we come back to the committee. But as far as formatting, we will continue to make it pretty and everything. But that's how we're moving forward with this at this time.
So can I ask for a motion to accept the 2024-2025 student handbook as presented and the 2024-2025 staff handbook as presented?
So moved.
Second. Second.
Can we add as long as, like, the addendums?
Yeah, with the changes that, yes, with the changes that were proposed. Can't see.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Mrs. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Halcrad?
Yes.
Mrs. Cudera?
Yes.
Thank you.
That's great.
Thank you. We talked about student staff handbook. The next H is just a policy update. We have two policies listed there. This is simply for a first read. Policy GCG, substitute teachers. We just wanted our policy to reflect more in line with the state and the rules as far as after twenty consecutive days, replace it with language that align with the Department of Ed requirements. And then policy JF, school admissions. We needed draft language to fall into policy JF to include a policy that a parent cannot request a specific teacher. They should, and then all children of school age who reside in the district will be entitled to attend public schools. The only thing that we added there is parents and guardians' requests for specific teachers are not accepted or considered. Essentially, that policy remains the same. This is just the first read, there's no vote required. But if you have any questions that we can forward to our policy subcommittee meeting, I'd be willing to take those into consideration now. Okay. Moving on, we have school breakfast and lunch meal prices a vote. I would ask Mr. McIntyre, our business manager, to come to the podium and discuss meal prices for the upcoming year. And there's a, in your packet and associated memo regarding this.
Chairperson Hood, school committee, thank you again. This one's pretty brief. Every year we have to vote meal prices for breakfast, lunch, adult and student. Long story short, there's a price equity tool that you're supposed to use if you do not have a fund balance in your revolving account. We have a fund balance, but we like to use that price equity tool to kind of give us a gauge of where we should be for, if there ever was a time that we need to use it. And it's just a good, you know, target, if you will. Based on that analysis, though the tool increased the prices, our proposed pricing, which is remaining flat for school year 24-25, still covers us and builds us enough comfort zone to be able to operate food service department as planned and with the changes that are suggested. Long story short, with that is, a lot of these prices don't really significantly impact the funding. It's, it all comes from reimbursable meals, which are all student-first meals that are universally free and funded that way. So, you know, we're talking students that buy second meals, two dollars for breakfast, three dollars and seventy-five cents for lunch for their second meals, again, same as last year. And then adults, because those meals aren't reimbursed and we cannot provide free lunches, we have to price those out too. So breakfast would be two seventy-five, same as last year, and five dollars for lunch, that which includes the meals taxes. And really, that's to cover the cost of materials and some of the labor that doesn't come full and through the reimbursements. Again, no, no real changes, just a mechanism to revote the prices every school year. Any questions or concerns?
So it's still free lunch?
First meal for students still remains free, universal free lunch. That's, you know, statewide initiative. Second meals come at cost to students, all meals come at cost to adults.
I, I am just curious how much below what the tool says we should be.
So we, we're actually above because we built the buffer last year. I don't know, you know, you probably don't recall. I was looking at it going aha when we were kind of going through the motion. But for so many years before last year, we were below what the price equity tool set to charge. So last year was our catch-up year, but it's also built the cushion that we can remain flat for a few years if there aren't any substantial changes to costs and inflation and things like that. So, you know, if I looked into my, you know, magic ball, whatever we call those things, for the next couple of years too, I wouldn't expect many changes unless it came from the state.
Will we see any changes this year in any of the equipment?
I will touch on that during my business manager report.
So can I?
We're just looking for a motion and a vote?
Can I ask for a motion to approve the school breakfast and lunch meal prices as proposed?
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion?
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Mrs. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Halcrad?
Yes.
Mrs. Cudera?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on, I would ask Mr. McIntyre to address on the next item on the agenda, the additional labor hours that we are proposing for the food service department.
All right, so I'll try to keep this one brief as well. But in our June presentation, we discussed how meal labor hours are measured by the state. You know, this isn't just a benchmark. This is, they truly tell you, you know, well, yes, it is a benchmark. But if you're at or above sixteen, you really need more labor hours to maximize, you know, your menus and what you're producing, what you're offering. We communicated that AES kitchen was six meals per labor hour above the state standard, and FMS kitchen was five meals per labor hour above the state standard of sixteen. So that means we, we're, we're putting out more than we have the labor to do. So we're asking to bridge that gap, not one hundred percent, but just enough to kind of start some of our new initiatives of menu changes and, and just efficiencies around the kitchen. We're going to be getting new equipment, so there'll be some training on that and some learning curve on that. But really, it's getting us to where we need to be so that we can get the most out of that department. This didn't just happen overnight. Again, we looked at this many months before we presented it in June, kind of saw where we could change things, procedures, gain efficiencies, implemented all those, and we were still behind the meals per labor hour. So really, this is needed. And again, we're not asking for it all right now, but just a little bit, see if it moves the needle and allows us some flexibility to still build more efficiencies. Overall impact of what we're proposing would be about a twenty thousand dollar increase to the, to the program, again, which is fully funded. This does not impact our local budget, nor will it. And there's rate increases for what meals are going to be reimbursed by this school year that should absorb at least fifty percent of those increased costs. So when it boils down, we're really asking for more labor hours for about, you know, ten grand more to the school revolving budget, which has been generating about one hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year on average. So to, you know, question?
I did have one question. I mean this, have read, read this wrong. So I, as it relates to AES, it looked like we were saying we're going to increase all three workers by fifteen minutes per day, perhaps. But then when I look at the proposed hours, I'm going to start to increasing. So I don't know if that was.
That might have been an oversight. It really should have just referenced the table below. So to your point, we're looking to increase one of the cafeteria workers a half an hour of the labor hours. So again, this isn't their total day, which might be the disconnect. We're not counting breaks, we're not counting, you know, cleanup. Those aren't meal labor hours, we're counting just meal labor hours. So a half an hour to one cook, and then fifteen minutes to another, and then a full part-time FTE of three hours. And by doing that, as a part-time, you know, we prevent ourselves from needing to provide benefits and all of those things to keep costs down. Does that help?
It is helpful. Any other questions? So can I ask for a motion to approve the additional labor hours for food services as outlined by the business manager?
So moved.
Second.
No further discussion? I think we need a roll call?
Mr. Hood? I will abstain. Miss, is Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Mrs. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Halcrad?
Yes.
Mrs. Cudera?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, Mr. McIntyre has his business manager report and update, which will include the question that you had, Mrs. Gomes.
All right, so I'll jump right into it. Just to conclude on FY24, we came in on budget or under budget, if you will. And that was through strategic budgeting and planning, you know, allocating funds to our, our grants, ESER, our facility revolving, you know, main, you know, utilizing our food service revolving in full. And by doing so, at the end of the year, we were able to implement some, some great projects as it relates to security and safety and just general upkeep in our, in our schools. So, you know, improved technology infrastructure as presented by the tech director a long time ago. It was a ten-year plan. This jumps right into that and helps purchase some things towards that. We were able to get in playground mulch, which is a compliance issue. You need to have at least six inches deep of playground mulch. It doesn't normally have to recur annually, but we were due for it. We were able to implement that, and the playgrounds look great. We got it in place right before our summer academies. We were able to, to utilize a contracted service for floor maintenance, which helped free up the hours of our shorthanded custodial and maintenance staff to focus on cleaning, painting, you know, general maintenance and upgrades. We have some other safety upgrades that I'm not going to mention out loud. We can go into those more in executive session, but those are disclosed here. And then we obviously met the one hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars or so that we had to commit to the FY25 budget with prepaid special intuitions. So that was great. You know, that, that maximized our allocated funds for fiscal '24 while returning about seven thousand dollars back to the town, which will close up to free cash. So, I mean, that's, that's as good as it gets. FY25 budget is underway, always improving. FY '25 budget is underway, always improving. The budget, the budget process, the tracking mechanisms. I think we upgraded our departmental tracking sheet since we still lack munis in, in the district, you know, departmentally. And everyone's jumped right on board with that sheet. A lot of good feedback about how it's keeping us on track with spending, getting purchases now so we don't have to later. They're ready for the school year, so that's been great and it's going accordingly. As we would expect, there are changes even now, you know, a month and a half into the new fiscal year. High school tuitions have changed because enrollment has changed. Right now, it seems favorable. We obviously have the agreement with the town that those funds, if aren't returned, will be negotiated to be utilized for something else first. So it's not necessary savings and it could still swing the other direction. There's some special education costs that we weren't expecting. One that could relate to residency, a residency program, which would be a budget buster. That'll be a big deal. We're still trying to gather more information on that. And then, you know, because of our custodial vacancies, we're, we're still working with the contractor to come in on budget to provide night services, which I had a conversation today. I, I'm not overly concerned. We'll, we'll be in place and we'll be going by the beginning of the school year. And it'll, it'll benefit us greatly, so. Facilities, we talked about the investment grade audit. It's been a lot of work, you know, Paul and I put a lot into it. Steve, we'll add our facilities director, there's meetings every day, people in the buildings every day, analysis constantly, phone calls, change of plans, you know, looking for as-built site maps. It's, it's, it's a lot of fun, but it's a lot of work, it's time consuming. But we're making sure we stay on track for Fall Special Town Meeting to get what we need in these buildings and to improve our environment as discussed. You know, just, this is my chance to shout out to all our summer help, our regular custodians and maintenance hand for everything that they do over the summer. It's, again, that's endless too. You think no one's in here and the buildings are clean, but there's always catch-up as, you know, a lot of our faculty and staff know. And we get into things that we wouldn't normally have gotten to, whether it's painting, an additional room, or being able to, to move some things around, or to clear out some old equipment, to surplus some things. We just cleaned out a, a workroom over in this building that's beautiful that I, I think there's high hopes to start to utilize as either a teacher lounge or an additional conference room, so only good things there. We've improved some internal, you know, manuals, procedures, if you will, the, the AHERA requirements. That was revisited, tested with vendors. That was a big undertaking and it's still ongoing, but that maintains our compliance in that area. And that document will be publicly posted to our, our website and shared in the links of the handbook as required by law. Only good news there, they tested over 350 samples throughout both schools and there's no sign of asbestos in these buildings. Integrated Pest Management Plan, again, just had a chance to, to revamp it, update it, talk to the contractor that provides these services to us, make sure the chemicals they use are compliant, safe, what they're used for, disclosing the fact sheets on them, so we, we beefed up those, those memos and documents and those will also be posted. As, as Mr. Gary alluded to earlier, our extended day and summer enrichment. So again, anything procurement, it's a lot. It's, you know, a lot of prep time, drafting documents, revisions, you know, meeting, discussing changes, posting, evaluating, and then getting people in the door and keeping people honest on timelines and talking to general counsel and things like that. And at the end of the day, this is, this is for the community. It's the ability for parents to be able to get to their work on time while knowing their kids are in good hands and already on the location where they go to school. As a parent of four, you know, I know how important that's going to be once all my kids are in school and, you know, we're trying to balance two, two jobs and that workload. So that, that really, you know, was a personal, it, it, it felt good personally, but it's, it's also very professional for everybody involved there. Food service, so this has been a fun year for, for Ms. Mello as the facility, uh, food facility director. Yeah, it's funny that I say that, but food service director, because she's very much been involved in the facilities this year. So we planned to purchase that equipment, had a contract, had it signed, and found out more information. So they came on to do a site audit before they delivered the equipment, purchased it. We were told the equipment won't fit through the doors, we need to get a Plan B. We need to disassemble the equipment, put it together. Did the workaround, found a way to get it in. Okay, now that it's in, what else did it need? We needed new floor drains. Our floor drains couldn't take the capacity of the water that was going to be released from the steamers and the ovens and the self-cleaning. So now, just a few days ago, we had two huge trenches cut into the slab of concrete in both kitchen floors, dirt all over the place, new drains being piped in so that we can get this equipment. And, and again, costly, procured, all done by myself and Shelley with the help of Steve, and we're on our way to get those floors poured concrete this Friday. Then we're going to paint over them and then we can look to get the electricity upgraded so that we can have our equipment in place by December. So that's your answer, Ms. Gomes. We wanted it now, we hit some road bumps again. It's not always just plug and play and you're good, you know. We had to up, up, upgrade a, a full floor of both schools, which would normally be a capital ask. We have those funds reserved, that we were able to do it on our own, not burden the taxpayers, not have to wait for town meeting. So we're on a roll there. And Shelley's been busting her butt to get it done and she's been here every day overseeing the project, making sure they're doing things right. It, it's been great. So we're excited for that, a little behind schedule, but by December, we're going to have some great equipment in there. And then we know we have the infrastructure in those kitchens to continue to operate. So that's really important. And then with that, we're also, you know, we know we have issues with our walk-in freezers and refrigerators. Not that they don't work, but they're not efficient, you know, at, from time to time they leak, you know, something seizes up, you know, the temperature doesn't regulate properly. So we tagged that into Train for Energy Conservation and we're going to maximize what we can with that project to replace these walk-in refrigerators and freezers too, which not only is going to grab some incentives and rebates, but it's going to get us what we need for, you know, the next 20 to 30 years. And hopefully, again, within our own food service revolving funds. One more thing with Train. So the fun thing with that project and the strategic thing with that project is that we didn't have to go directly to procurement so we can maximize all these other savings and not just get hit with the cost. One thing Train shared with me is they looked at a similar project on a larger scope that someone brought Train in, they got hit with the number that it was going to cost to upgrade and it was 2.7 million. Again, larger scope, not our project, but very similar. The school district said, no, never mind, we're going to just procure it our normal way, we'll go out to bid, we'll evaluate. Their lowest bid ended up being $4.7 million, $2 million more. So that's what this project does for us. It tackles all the opportunities there are for not only energy savings, but to upgrade our capital at a minimal cost to our taxpayers. And that's why it was important to go that way. And when they give us their final report, that's what they're going to show. They're going to show the cost, but there's going to be this rebate, that rebate, this grant, that grant, this incentive, that incentive, plus energy savings. And it's, it's really the most equitable, equitable way to do these things.
And I just want to add in that you, you saw Morgan at Max tonight, but we have a whole team of people. They have a solar team, they have the engineers, but we've met with multiple people from Train that have been very, very hands-on and very involved in the project. So we, we feel very confident and comfortable with, with them.
All right, so moving on, a not-so-funnel on transportation. So Town Hall failed to include our transportation contract article on the spring annual town meeting where it would have allowed us to have a, a five-year option. Not the end of the world because per our legal, we can, as long as, before we hit that fourth and fifth year, we can vote and get approval to do so, to have those option years. So we're going to hit that in the fall, but in the meantime, I have a contract in front of the committee to sign to get underway for the three-year term with the expectations that we'll get those two option years. For the community, bus routes and information will be shared very soon. We just got the list back from our vendor. We're, we're auditing it, making some small tweaks, making sure it makes sense to us, and then we'll get that out to the public. More importantly, you know, more than once, we shared that the registration was out there and people needed to register and register and register. We looked at the numbers and we have over 200 students returning this year that used the bus last year that are still unregistered this year. That is a problem because it's going to be a problem to the families when they expect their kids to get on and off the bus accordingly, yet they're unregistered. And it's going to be a problem to us to communicate with the bus drivers, to let them know these additional students are expected to be on your bus or on your bus, keep them safe. We need to get this together as, as a community and a school district. We need to register on time to keep everyone safe and to keep, keep the, the wheels turning, no pun intended. So we expect some roadblocks there. You know, we did our best, we reminded, we extended, we posted. Now I'm asking everyone else who's listening to do their best, and if you haven't registered yet, register late. We're going to do our best to get your students on the bus for the beginning of the school year. And, and, you know, stand by otherwise. You know how to reach us, we'll work with you and, and, you know, we want this to work. But the best way for that to happen is to meet the deadlines moving forward. Other matters. There's a lot that went on this summer. I forgot a few things, you know, preschool registrations underway, we've collected payments, deposits. Shout out to the business office, you know, Bonnie Grace, I know she's sitting over here, Sandy Reposo, they've kept it together for me, they've put up with all my changes, my requests, my, you know, just everything. So without them, a lot of what I'm reporting on when it happens, and they don't very much ever get credit. So this was my opportunity for that. But there's a lot that I probably didn't include in this memo that should have been and a lot of it they had to do with the success of, so thank you to them. Town updates. Fall Special Town Meeting is scheduled for September 30th, 2024. The articles will do the 26th, we'll be well ahead of that. I'm hoping to have them to them at the end of this week. There's a few things on the docket that I can touch base on once we get the approval from the town. But we need our community to support us so that we can get what we need at, at this town meeting. As far as I'm concerned, we've been transparent with the town in our asks and our expectations, board of selectmen, a steering committee, the whole nine. Everyone knows what's coming, but we need everyone's vote to get that through. And then just operationally, we still have an interim town accountant. She, she was adamant that she was signing off at one point by the end of the school year, I mean, the end of the fiscal year. She's still here, she's great, she's only part-time. It's a problem to us in, in our operations. So, you know, I, I just want people to be aware of that too, the committee to be aware of that. You noticed our, our budget report doesn't have the fiscal '25 budget in it yet, it hasn't been updated. And again, that's just the limited capacity between what they've given us access to and what they can truly afford to do. They have a lot going on with audits, vacancies, things like that. There's some work that we're taking on to help alleviate them because of absences, which we very much intend to give back, but, you know, know that we're team players, we're doing what, what is asked of us. But it's important that we, we figure that out and have some continuity over there in the accounting department as we've certainly started to figure out in the treasury department, which is helpful and makes our job easier and efficient and just the whole process. So I felt that was important to update the committee on. Any questions?
Patrick, just going back to the transportation. Can parents still register now if that link is put back up on like, say, all the Facebook pages?
So the link's available on our website, which is what we are trying to direct our families to get to use. We, we put up a new robust website with all the information you need up there. It's all posted, we send out one call, we did send out one call on Facebook posts. But it, it lives there. Get there, register if you have questions, there's contact information, you know, we're available. We're, we're getting phone calls and registrations every day still.
Yeah.
But it just needs to be done timely.
Yeah.
To meet everyone's expectations. It's not me being selfish, but it's, you know, we want you to be, we want you to know where to go and what to do on the first day of school and, and have that peace of mind and know your kids are going to be taken care of as they need, as needed. And we have so many other things going on that we don't want to be chasing bus registrations until January, you know.
I was the first to fill it out. Get on the bus.
So yes, it's still available online, the link's still up. And we're going to do our best to get it, get them on the schedule for the, for the first day of school.
I'll post it on the PTO page.
Yeah, I was thinking I could post it on some of the pages I've kicked off.
Any other questions? No, okay. Seeing none, I know that Patrick also touched upon the transportation contract. So we do need a vote for that tonight. And then Mr. Sonas will get the committee members to sign off on that contract tonight. But that's more of a formality, so all I'm working for is a vote at this point.
So could I ask for a motion to accept the transportation contract as presented?
So moved. Second.
Further discussion? We'll take a roll call.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Mrs. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Howcroft?
Yes.
Mrs. Cudera?
Yes.
Thank you. Next is our technology report, which you have in hand. And we had decided as a committee that the technology director would be presenting every other month. So you will see Mr. Missler next month presenting, but I, I would like to highlight as part of his report, you know, they've checked and cleaned all of the students' Chromebooks over the summer and they have put out email communication to families regarding the Chromebook insurance, which we highly recommend. But they've done a nice job of negotiating the same costs as last year. So it's $33 for the year, which again is highly recommended. Again, you can read the rest, it's the rollover in Aspen, updating the servers and computers. I, I want to pay, also have you pay close attention to how they handle the fax lines. Again, Mr. Missler and his team finding savings again in the district from things that were done prior for savings of $3.67 per month due to no longer needing those extra fax lines. So we're always looking for ways to save money. And then, of course, we will review with you in executive session the things that we've been doing over the summer for the safety and security initiatives that we've been in discussion about. So do you have any questions on that? Okay, and that is all I have for tonight. Thank you.
So should we move to our reports?
School committee member reports.
Yep.
Yeah.
Do we have any school committee member reports?
Just one quick one. Regarding the regionalization committee, I just have a statement to read. So the regionalization committee started, I started to send out letters to the community members asking if they're interested in being part of this committee, volunteer committee. At the last meeting, it was voted to have certain number of parents, staff, administration and other community members. And I'm hoping to have this volunteer committee together for a formal vote at our next meeting. We should have the members by them.
Any other reports?
None at this time.
Okay. And if Mr. Hood, if you want to just highlight the communication and information that's in section eight?
Yep, so we have the AES newsletter, FMS newsletters, MAC tuition rates, REEDS collaborative agreement, the REEDS quarterly report, letter to staff and an update on personnel matters. So we can, can I ask for a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion?
Hi. Hi.